It is 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the January 7th meeting of the Reed Field Select Board. Cool night. The sheriff will join us, Sheriff Mason, at about 7 o'clock. So unless there's objection from the board, we'll take him out of order to be sensitive to his time.
Works.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay. We'll start with the minutes of the Select Board meeting of December 10th, 2018. Air in your packet.
I move that we approve the minutes of December 10th, 2018, as submitted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes of December 10th as printed in the packet. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Thank you. And now we'll move on to warrants 26 through 29. 26 and 27 have already been reviewed and accepted, correct? December 26 warrants?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And so we should vote on those, though we have not had a meeting since December 26, correct?
Yeah, they were seen, reviewed, and signed by a majority of the board.
Okay, yes.
So they don't need to be voted on, but we just needed to put them in the record?
Correct. However, 28 and 29, I reviewed 28. Who actually does the first quarter of the year? Do we recall?
Kristen.
Well, I did the first quarter because that was July, August, September.
Oh, I meant the first quarter of the calendar year.
You meant the third quarter.
That might be me because you wanted the last one, right?
After school, maybe.
John was doing the fall.
Yes, right. I think that because this is always, that's how we did it last year. I think so.
I was last, I was, I had the last quarter. Yes. Oh, you're the third.
So it is you.
Okay. So I was very happy to do it.
Yes, oh, good. Okay, I'm sorry.
And I continue to be everybody's backup, so it's not an issue at all.
Okay, good, good, good. Yes, indeed, I love that. Okay, great.
Okay, so you're on board for that. So I did review the warrant last week. There's a payroll warrant in there and there's also some state fees that I signed off on. And the regular warrant really was all customary expenses. I didn't see anything questionable. Everything matched receipts. My only comment would be if you look at the central main power, the very last item, the $510.80 for streetlights, that is something we're hopefully going to address through a process to get into something a little bit more energy efficient and at the same time, a little bit more cost effective, at least on an ongoing basis. There may be some upfront costs in that.
Did we have a problem with central main power overcharging us?
Not that I know of.
No, I'm not aware of any. Teresa tracks on a monthly basis. We've got 10 years of history. It looked, it has always looked pretty standard. We have more in the winter, we have less in the summer.
Maybe it overcharged me, that's why.
It looked, it looked, it looked good to us. However, it doesn't mean that there couldn't have been something at some point. And when we did talk about CMP during the budget discussion, because the proposed increase, their response was, "Well, if we go to solar, we won't have to worry about it."
That's correct.
I liked their answer anyway.
That was the Budget Committee?
That was the Budget Committee.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So with that review, I will go ahead, since I reviewed it, and move warrants 28 and 29 in a sum of $370,365.81. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Now it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or need for further information from the town manager in particular, or me?
I'm all set.
Okay, all in favor. The motion carries. Thank you. And we'll move on to Select Board Communications. I'll just make one very quick comment myself up front, and that is that tomorrow is Election Day for, the school district has a bond package. Hopefully you've looked into information on that, and I'm just trying to make sure people are aware of that. That's why you see the voting booths actually set up over here. So I do encourage people, it's a piece of the governance of this town, just like the county is, just like the town expenses are, so I encourage everyone to participate. Anybody else?
Yes. On that note, there was a letter to the editor of the Kennebec Journal by one of our residents, David Hefner.
Yes.
And he seemed dissatisfied that, I'm trying to answer his question, which is why I'm bringing it up. He seemed dissatisfied that there had not been publicity or public meetings about the school bond referendum and thought that it should be postponed because there hadn't been. And to that, I'd just like to lead David and anyone else to the Select Board meeting. Our last one, I believe, was when the superintendent was here, and I'm going to say 45 minutes of talk was given on that. There were also meetings in each town, I believe.
There were four public hearings.
Four public hearings. In addition to, he came to meet with us as the Select Board. And there were, there was at least one mailing. He did mention that it had been posted, that is, the required posting was here at the town office and at the post office in Reed Field and Kents Hill. So there has been quite a bit of information put out there by that. And the opinion that we all talked about was that it seemed a good idea to nip a lot of these things in the bud before they become much worse and much more expensive and as costs go up. So that was kind of the gist that we got from that, and I just wanted to plug that because I think it's good for the town to not have those expenses go higher and cost us more.
Anybody else?
I just want to mention that on the Town of Reed Field Facebook page, which you can find on Facebook, we have the sort of information about joining the Heritage Days Committee. You don't necessarily have to be on Facebook to do that. If you come to the town office and express interest in being a part of the planning of Heritage Days this year, you can get a very basic volunteer application and you can be a part of it. It's online as well. We're looking for folks to help us this year, and we're trying to make sure that we are able to work cooperatively with all of the other groups in order to sort of send out, you know, sort of a fun unified Heritage Days list of things that are going on and celebrate all the hardworking people in the town who want to make it a good time. And so find that online, check that out. We're trying to, you know, do some fun things, more things for young people. And Chris is my first committee member, so I do in fact need her there, so it's good to have her as a part of it. So please check us out. If you're interested, come down to the town office. If you're online, check it out on the Facebook page. It's a great way to find out what's going on in Reed Field. So, thank you.
Dennis, at great risk, because I see representatives from other committees here, at great risk to myself.
Yes.
Is that committee for Heritage Days the most fun committee of all?
We try to have a good time. I like to work hard. I like to play hard. Yes, we're always looking for folks to, you know, join in the party. I know, yes, sir. But we, I just want to say that having been a part of the Reed Field Festival and knowing that, you know, folks were so great this year with the help of Chris and a budget, I think it's a good, a good chance to sort of celebrate the town. I enjoy that because I love living here. So if we can have a big community party, I want that to be what Heritage Days celebrates and its great history all mixed into one.
Thank you. Every other committee in town is entitled to a softball question from me.
(laughing) That's good, thank you.
Chris, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I'm good with this.
She's good.
Yeah.
Boards, committees, commissions, and departments. Inside your packet, we have the Reed Field Community Library Board meeting minutes for November 7th, 2018. And we'll also, that's the only minutes we have in here at this point.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When is cribbage club? When does that meet? Do you know? Does it say on there? Yes.
Deb Peel's here, she can tell you.
First Wednesday is meeting, afternoon and Thursday is meeting. We can't say we've had much.
Okay. Well, I do love cribbage, so maybe I can come down.
Do you agree with that?
That's it? Yes, all right, good. I'm just curious. I kept coming up and I was curious.
And if Eric is 24, I beat you.
(laughing) That's right. It helps me count to 15.
Figure out how I got to 22 first.
(laughing)
Public communication, we would welcome any members of the public who would like to speak to the board and the wider audience.
I'm here first. How many should welcome next to you?
Okay.
My name's Ralphino.
Sir, could you go to the microphone?
Yes.
We do this all officially, sir.
There's a whole thing, yeah.
Hi, Mom.
Yep.
That's right, do that.
My name's Ralphino. I live at 52 Mountain View Lane. First of all, Eric, thank you for your response to our drainage concerns. I understand, I think this is going to be a work in progress. I don't know whether you guys have been out there yet or not, but it is creeping out onto Thunder Castle. If the road didn't have such an extreme crown on it, it would be an issue by now, but we have, we have property owner issues we're going to have to address to solve the problem. But I have a couple of questions as pertains to the budget development. First, Selectwoman Woodson, comments about the education budget development and the referendum. I know that there have been meetings where district members have tried to explain what's going on, but I think there are still big holes in the process. From what I understand, they don't have to specifically outline exactly when the borrowing will kick in, when the bond tranches will happen, and I don't see anything in the outline of the total bond expense that speaks specifically to the town shares. And it would seem to me that that would be very helpful to know what that $6 million and change is impact on Reed Field and couple with that when the borrowing will actually take place. Especially that would be helpful for you, I would assume, in terms of making your long-range plans for budget impact. And I don't see that anywhere.
We did get some of that.
We, yeah, there were, there were items in regards to
Did it come in a
the individual towns and a projection of mill effect.
Okay.
And that should be on, I have not checked this, sir, but it should be on their budget page.
On their budget page and their webpage?
I can confirm that, it is on their page.
Okay. But my suggestion is that it should be dispensed through as many public information venues as is humanly possible, so nothing falls through the cracks because this, as in any small town, is the biggest expense and biggest mill rate impact.
Right.
And one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is because I don't know what that is. And I would think that somewhere, there should be some outline as to the priorities of spending and when they're going to draw this down. Coupled with what the existing bonded indebtedness is and what our liabilities are, so that we can determine whether or not we might ask them to refi if interest rates continue to be favorable.
Yeah, they did have
And I have no information about that, and I suspect that the general public doesn't either.
Okay. They did have that bond information in regards to what the indebtedness of the school district was and so forth. Again, they did have a handout, I believe, they brought to the last meeting, but they also, they did speak to it as well, so it's on tape, so you can watch that portion of our meeting. I will, I will address one thing that I just want to be very careful on commenting on, and that is that I view, and I know not everybody universally perhaps agrees with this, I view the RSU as a completely separate taxing entity. We certainly control $4 or so of the mill rate, they control a certain amount of it, and the county also controls a bit of our mill rate as well. And so I always encourage people to participate in the governance that actually does the taxing. We have to put it on our bill by law and send it out to you, but we're not the people that necessarily make decisions about it. We have to react to it.
Indeed, I understand.
And so forth. So that's just a public piece of information in terms of how I look at that particular process.
It just
And I did attend the public hearing for Reed Field.
And I understand that
It was poorly attended.
a lot of those public hearings were very sparsely attended.
It was very poorly attended.
Generally, that's a tacit yes vote, but you don't know for sure.
Right.
I just, I just think that given the burden and the cost impact, and we all want our schools to thrive, as Selectwoman Woodson says, you don't want infrastructure falling apart because it will cost you more later. But I, and I guess this is something I communicate to the district people when, if I ever get to meet them, that I think they could do a better job in terms of dispensing information and making it available. Maybe they think they're doing a good job, but I'm here to tell you that I, I think it could be better. It could be more collaborative, especially in light of the power that they have and the reporting responsibilities that they have that seem to end-run-town circuits by statute in some cases.
Mm-hmm.
But that said, that is what it is.
Yes. Thank you.
The PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point Issue, been watching that only through the newspapers. It sounds to me like we have a capital expense coming here. I'd like a little bit more light shed on how that relationship is involving with the member towns and what it's actually going to mean for us and where that safety unit is actually going to end up and who's going to run it.
That's why we have Sheriff Mason coming tonight.
He's coming, okay.
And so he'll be here, and actually, I will certainly allow him to entertain questions from the floor.
Very good. Because it sounds to me like everybody's scrambling at this point, and that notice that we're not going to do this anymore came kind of at the 11th hour. Mercifully, it happened at the start of a budget season, but it still doesn't sound to me as though it was a long-range concept that we all knew was coming and could plan for it in a more timely fashion. Are you guys high-band or low-band here?
I can't tell you.
Okay.
Eric, do you know?
I don't know. I mean, I will say that we did get the first notice of the intent sometime in August, but I believe that it's a lot less of a scramble now than what it was, or a lot less confusion. I think that Sheriff Mason will do a great job explaining this, but basically, we have our PSAP through Somerset County. We have our fire and rescue through Winthrop. And so the only really affected service is that law enforcement section.
The 911 section.
Yeah, and so that is
Which is a big deal.
It is a very big deal. But Sheriff Mason's working with most, I think, most of the other towns at this point because really his decision where that dispatching comes from, and I talked with the gentleman from Public Safety, the state, today about this, and Sheriff Mason will be here again later. But I think we're in a lot better position than it originally appeared, and things are settling out. But I'll let Ken explain that.
Yeah, it sounds like a very fragmented system to begin with. Hopefully, there will be some consolidation as a result of this change that will give you some economies of scale and actually better service.
Yeah, I would hope so. It seems as though there's multiple agencies
Yes, there are.
At multiple levels.
And they all want a piece of the pie.
With different bandwidths, as you mentioned.
Turf.
So, yeah, it's definitely complicated, and this is an area that I'm not, you know, super up on, so I'll leave it there.
If your fire company is happy with the progress and the Winthrop emergency responders are happy, then that's probably a good sign. If they are.
They've been happy so far. I think that, again, because it really is the law enforcement piece.
Yeah.
Our other two, the other two-thirds of our equation, PSAP and Fire and Rescue, are not changing. So it really is just that one law enforcement piece, and I think we have a solution, so.
Good. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
If you want to wait just a moment, I won't go into great detail, but you can go on to the Mariana Cook site and go under the bond part. If you slide down past the frequently asked questions, it tells us that in the first year, the Reed Field share would be $65 on a $150,000 home in Reed Field.
Okay.
The second year share would be $136, again on a $150,000 home. That doesn't mean that taxes are definitely going to go up that much.
Right.
Which is what we discussed here, because as the property base increases, then we have to see what everything comes out with. This bond, the next school budget, as well as the municipal budget, and the county budget all put together.
It's a moving target. There are a lot of pieces to determine what the actual mill rate impact will be.
Right. But the impact would not be more than $65 this year
Worst case.
and $136 the following years on a $150,000 home value.
Okay. So if they came up with those numbers that way, then they must have a borrowing schedule when they would actually pull the trigger on incrementally checking down that $6 million.
It's going to be this spring because they want to do the work over the summer.
They're going to do the whole thing all at once?
Yes.
Yep.
Because they're going to hit, they're going to try and do all of these projects over this summer while the schools are not in session.
Well, given what interest rates are doing, it's probably not a bad thing to borrow it all at once. You can't arbitrage it, it's too bad, but spending quick, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, here is Ken Mason.
I don't have any, so I'll use yours. I'm the governor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from members of the public? Thanks. For appointments, reappointments, and resignations, we are considering the resignation of Ben McIntosh from the Trails Committee. He just recently joined, and we were very happy to welcome him. However, we'd regret, he's moved out of state, so it's a long ways to come to build a trail, apparently. So, did you want to speak to this?
Yes.
Great.
I'm Greg Durgan from Reed Field and also Chair of the Trails Committee. And I've come to praise Ben, not to bury him.
Yes, please.
Ben, correct me, Eric, if I'm wrong. I think the story with Ben getting on the Trails Committee, he was a graduate of Marana Cook, so I knew him pretty well. I think he came in looking for a job.
Yes, yeah.
To build a trail or something, and it was a notice, the Trails Committee needed volunteers. So I think that day, he took out an application, didn't get a job, but got to do some good work. We valued Ben. He was a shining light, his energy and enthusiasm. He helped massively, in some ways, get the mill stream dam when we first started clearing it. It was a couple of years prep for all that, but when it came down to do the nitty and gritty, he was there with his chaps, his chainsaw, his helmet. It was a huge help. And we were disappointed that he moved. It took a while to get his resignation back because in his mind, he kept thinking, "I'll be back, I'll be back, and it's just not going to work out." He's very successful in Massachusetts, and just wanted to let you know that he was a valued member, and if he ever comes back, we'll grab him.
Thank you. Okay.
With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ben from the Trails Committee. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept with regret that resignation. Any discussion?
The Trails Committee would welcome a new member, I suppose.
Always.
And if you're interested to have a good time playing outside, you could play with Greg.
Play's the key word.
Yeah, plays.
So Greg, is that the most fun committee?
The Trails Committee will be sponsoring an event, as usual at Heritage Days.
I'm excited about that.
You're going to be part of the event.
Good, all right.
Thank you very much. Let's go back to the library.
Thank you. Did we vote?
No.
Not yet. All in favor.
I signed practice, there we go.
Thank you.
Do we want to
Hi, Ken, how are you?
Very well.
Good.
Do we want to do the library, because that's going to be real quick, and Sonya's here.
Okay, do we want to do the library first, and then, Ken, how do we want to do this?
The libraries
Are you okay for a couple of minutes, Ken?
I'm good.
Okay.
The library's a short one, right?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So the new business that we have, 19061, is to accept a $25,000 grant from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation for the Reed Field Community Library. This is absolutely
(whistling)
So I wore my library tie tonight in special recognition.
That's it.
Would the two of you go to the microphone? Do you want to say anything?
We're thrilled.
Okay.
But you can go up anyway, because I have a question.
Come to the podium. Yes, we have questions.
Yeah, so tell us a little bit about when you applied for this and how, what transpired.
We've been working on making some changes to the library. We've been working on it for several months. And when Sonya joined the board, she just got right down to it, did the application, and tralà, it came through.
Well, it was, it happened our board meeting. We have a board meeting the first Wednesday of every month, so the first Wednesday of October, whatever date that was, we were talking about money and need for money, and I went back home that night and got on the computer, and it was about 11 o'clock at night, found the Stephen and Tabitha King, contacted Debbie and said, "Is it okay?" She's like, "Whatever you got to do." So I spent the two weeks putting it all together and applied for the grant. It was due the 17th of October. Put it all together, applied, and lo and behold, a few days before Christmas, the magic envelope came in the mail.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
The only regret is that we asked for $50,000 and got half. Got half.
It should have asked for 100, right?
Yeah.
I think they have a max of 50.
Do you have plans for what order things are going to go in, and will that be?
That's in the grant, yeah.
It is?
In the grant application, right.
Yeah. And is that coordinated with Eric, with our building plans for the library?
Yeah, we've been talking about that. I think that we are very much on the same page that the grant money really is intended to be for interior programming-related activities, the major structural issues we have with the building, the roof, that really is something that we need to look at, I'd say, out of a different pot of money.
Okay.
Because the focus of this really was for things like heat pumps and re-envisioning and reformatting some of the program areas. So those things that, they've already started on and already had made good progress, I think this is going to be a continuation of that in many respects. And so, yeah, they don't necessarily have a hierarchy at this point of what is going to happen first and last. They do have that list of items. So the board, I understand, is going to have to do some prioritization, and all of it fits, I think, fairly well with the Select Board's goals of improving the building and addressing some of those issues, including the functionality. But again, the larger piece, that roof item, we could spend all that money and then some on the roof. We will at some point. So I think that the intent and the direction here is to put that towards the intended purpose.
I noticed in the letter that they want to hear back
Yes.
that you did what you said you were going to do. Well, we'll do as much as we can with what they gave us.
Yeah.
And we're always looking for ways to do it economically, but we don't want to do it, we want to do it once.
Yeah.
We don't want to have to redo this. The other piece would be, we welcome the board to come in, visit. You know, we talked about that a month ago or so. We'd love to have you come and see what we're doing, and it will maybe even give us some ideas. You never know, so.
Debbie, why don't we set up something official then? Debbie, why don't we set up something official then, because we did like a cemetery tour, we've done a transfer station tour. So I think it would be, you know, we'll have us, an actual meeting, basically.
That'd be great.
To do that, was that what you were gonna address?
No, but I think that's perfect. I, my concern is that I think there are a lot of building structural needs, and I think the town should pony up for that, and that you ought, my own opinion, that's all I'm saying. I think that the grant money that you got ought to go towards as many of the library functioning pieces as possible, because the building's really the responsibility of the town, and so we're still gonna benefit from having the twenty-five thousand dollars. But I, I would like, I just think that's where the responsibility lies, with this board and, you know, with the town. So, before you go spending things, money on heat pumps, for instance, since you didn't get the whole fifty thousand, I would say that's something the town ought to pony up for. And if you're trying to make it more functional and more usable and better quality for the librarian and for the residents, that's where I'd like to see you put that and have the town address the building needs, but.
Well, we'll keep that, and we'll give that good consideration.
And it's just one opinion, so.
We'll give that consideration. We want to do it all, but, you know, we know it's not possible to do it all with this money, but we're not done. We're not done looking.
You've done a lot already. Right. And we're planning on money for this year.
Yeah, but we're not done looking for more money. We're gonna continue that process, and hopefully, with the friends of the Reed Field Library, you know, nothing gets done overnight, we're just gonna keep plugging away.
So can you and Chris schedule a meeting with Eric and Deb?
Yeah, we'll do that.
In the next thirty days, say?
A good time would be when the library's not open.
Yeah. Are you open on Monday nights?
Yes.
Yes. Well, that's not good.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion in regards to this, because I've always wanted to make a motion with Stephen King in it. So I'd like to move that the town of Reed Field, for the community library of Reed Field, accept the twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation.
I'll second that.
In the amount of twenty-five thousand. It's been moved and seconded. No discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
So Ken, it's seven oh one, you're on.
Thank you, sir.
And this is item nineteen oh six two, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Ken, if you'll just go to the microphone afterwards.
Thank you, Ken.
Great, I wanted to just simply welcome you. Ken's also a resident of Reed Field, which is great. And basically, you're going to give us a little bit of information on this dispatching situation and possible changes and so forth.
I will.
So I'll let you just, I'll sit back here.
Okay, thank you. I'm actually gonna go from start, how we got to this point. And I just want you to know that I'm honored to speak before the Board of Selectmen and Eric and the townspeople, as I am a fellow townie, and as your sheriff here in Kennebec County. So how did we get here? When I took over being sheriff, I had a lot of things on my plate, trying to get things squared away, and I knew the radio communication wasn't that good. I knew that our information management system wasn't getting the information like it should get through the RCC or the Regional Communication Center up in Augusta. Probably May of last year, or whatever it was, I started getting information from towns. What do you pay for dispatch services? And I sent a letter out to all the towns, and there were twenty-two of them that were involved in the RCC. So Cliff Wells, who is the Director of the RCC, he knew that I was dissatisfied, not with what the dispatchers were doing, they're very much professional people. In fact, when I took over, my chief and I went up there within the first week, they had never seen a sheriff come to visit them.
Wow.
It's very important that we in law enforcement take ourselves down a couple notches and get to know these people where nine-one-one actually starts, which is the person that picks up the phone, okay? Skip ahead a few months to August. Cliff Wells called a meeting. I was invited, Chief Toman, Jim Toman from Gardner PD was invited. And we were told that the RCC would no longer dispatch for Kennebec SO or Gardner PD effective July one, twenty nineteen. Okay, we're done. So it's like, holy cow. Well, I already done some checking earlier with Augusta PD, where I came from, as well as Lincoln County, I spent eighteen years at Augusta PD. In fact, the Chief of Police, Jared Mills, I trained him, his first days and months on the job. He succeeded because of himself. He's a very smart young man, okay? And I just, I ran it across him, you know, "Do you think you could do this?" And he says, "I don't know, we have to get to that point." Well, in August, when Cliff said, "We're done," I got to that point. I reached out to Jared. The sheet that's in front of you, if you just take, it's a spreadsheet, if you take it, break it apart and put it together, you can see on this particular sheet here, there's only twenty-one towns. Gardner is excluded from this, because when I went to Jared at Augusta PD, he said he would dispatch for us, but he would not dispatch for Gardner PD, because they're a very active city, and that would overwhelm their system or their manpower. But he could do it for us. The people at Augusta, they ran some numbers, because they knew the numbers that are on here, and they knew the last column all the way to the right, which is not shaded in yellow, I apologize for that, it's yours, it's gray, that is what each town was paying to the RCC for radio dispatch, for law enforcement. And if you look going down, you see a fire column, it's on the first page. The RCC dispatches for four fire departments within the county. Okay? Now Jared didn't want anything to do with dispatching fire department, but he said, "Look, we'll do them, because there's only four of them, and the call volume isn't really that high." So we thought, "All right, that's pretty good." So these are the numbers that they had come up with. Again, the furthest column all the way to the right is what towns were paying now. And the next column over is what the towns will be paying the City of Augusta to dispatch for. Now, there is an increase, okay? I'm not happy about that. I'm a very fiscally responsible individual, and nobody likes increases. I know, I paid my taxes. So, but, I just can't sit back and do nothing. I have to, I was given a problem and I found a solution. And it's a little bit of an increase, and if you go down to our town, which is...
About halfway.
Yeah.
We're the fifteen five sixty-eight.
Right. We have a three thousand dollar increase, that's pretty substantial.
That's an annual cost?
That's annual, yes. Now, do you know who Reed Field uses for PSAP services?
Somerset.
Somerset, so that, so you're still gonna make your payment to Somerset. And, and this is gonna be the payment, and what we're gonna try to do, and what I really want to do, is I just want to keep Augusta as our vendor, okay? We don't want contracts like what have been going out from the RCC, their contracts that you've been getting, you owe us this much every... What I would like to do is have the money come in from the towns into the county, and then the county pay them. We're gonna send you an invoice. For dispatch services, here is the invoice for our vendor Augusta PD payable to Kennebec County, and then we'll send them the check. It's just kind of, it'd be a little easier, and there's a less, one less contract we have to deal with. I'm sure that you have several contracts and...
So you would have the contract with Augusta, and then all these twenty-one towns would have a contract with you, essentially?
Right, we'll, if you want to call it a contract, that's fine, but we're just gonna invoice you for dispatch services
Right.
to the town of Reed Field.
Okay.
Okay? I just think it would be cleaner that way.
So, Ken, may I ask you a question?
No, okay, sorry. Go ahead, no, please do.
Yeah. So, so I just want to understand this, because I haven't heard about this before, so thank you for being so patient and clear. So the, so we're talking about these different services that help the people of Reed Field, and they're at different places. We pay one county Somerset for something, we pay something else for this. And, and what you're saying is, this would sort of be a, you mentioned a vendor relationship, so we, we wouldn't necessarily get billed for just what we use, but the towns themselves would be the vendors, is that what you're saying?
No, Augusta PD will be our vendor.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, for Kennebec Sheriff.
Right.
Okay.
So, and to elaborate a little bit more before I go any further myself.
Yes, thank you.
My biggest problem that I had, okay? First off, the communication was terrible. Well, that lies completely on the county of Kennebec, okay? And it should've been taken care of long before I took office, okay? All the radios and the cars and the portables are antiquated, they're old, they don't work right, and I knew that, okay? But I had so much other stuff going on, that I finally got to this point where I could deal with one big thing and get it completed, because if you have a bunch of things going, you don't get anything done. But my biggest problem was, we have what's called IMC. That is our records management system. We put the information in, and it's stored. The RCC went to the Spillman's records management system. I'm not sure why, but they did, probably because of money, because money is a driving thing nowadays. Eighty-seven percent, approximately that, of law enforcement in the state of Maine have IMC, okay? They chose this one. What they were doing, what was happening, is when they would dispatch a call to us, and this is where I had the biggest heartburn, is they had entered the information into the Spillman system, okay? They have this software called X-Wave, okay? So the Spillman system talked to the X-Wave, and then it talked to IMC, and it dumped in no information. Or information that was going to the deputies out on the street, it was only partial information. So what we had was, we had an apple that talked to a pear that talked to an orange, okay? And the reason why I went with Augusta PD is because when I was with Augusta PD in nineteen ninety-five, we got IMC, okay? They dispatched from IMC, and what that does is, right now, I can't tell you how many burglaries or incidents that we had on Church Road in Reed Field in twenty eighteen, because the apple that talked to the pear didn't give the orange any information. Now, when we, when we go to Augusta, all that information is gonna be in there. I'll be able to tell you exactly what's going on. And plus, IMC offers scheduling, payroll, and Spillman doesn't, doesn't offer that. The state offered, "Okay, you guys just go to Spillman and we'll be all good." And I'm like, "No, I'm not going to Spillman." I said, "I'll go to Spillman if you pay for it, but you also have to train the hundred and forty-eight people in my agency, which includes myself, has got to be trained on." Are you gonna pay for that training? No, they're not gonna pay for that training. And plus, we've had it, and plus, we have this jail module. Our, the information that we have in our jail module of all the people that come in and out of there is immense, so.
So Ken, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the fifteen, and maybe Eric can chime in on this, if I, if I get into an area that needs more clarification. So the fifteen five sixty-eight, that's what we're paying for law enforcement only, or is that combined?
Yes, no, that's...
That's the law enforcement breakout.
That's law enforcement only, because your fire department is dispatched by Winthrop.
So my one question that's kind of technical, I guess, if you, it's not technical, but it's, if we don't do this on a contractual basis, we do it on a vendor-only basis, how can we be predictable about cost in outgoing years?
Well, that's something I'm gonna work with, with the, with the county administrator, Mr. Devlin. Okay, that's... This is how I would like to see things done. How it should actually go legally with all the attorneys and all this other stuff, I don't know.
I mean, we certainly have vendors that charge us twenty thousand, or, you know, that's not an unusual thing. But this is, you know, this is obviously the kind of service that we've been contracting, so I'm... So my one concern is outgoing years' costs.
Yeah.
Because I will simply say that a three thousand dollar increase, yes, it's, it's money, but it's, it's, the impact level is, is less than I would have expected.
Well, when you think of the security of the citizens of this county and my deputies out on that road, that's a small price to pay.
I agree.
I'd be willing to get a tax increase on that. It would be minuscule, but I'll pay it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Okay, are there, and I also said, you know, we would take questions from the floor, from citizens, if they wanted to ask.
I've still got a little bit more.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Before you finish, can I ask a couple clarifying questions?
You certainly may.
On acronyms, that's all I need.
Yeah.
Okay, so currently, we use Winthrop for our fire dispatch.
I believe so.
Lakes Region Mutual Aid is the Winthrop.
There you go.
Right, okay. And we use the RCC for law enforcement?
Correct.
And we use Somerset County for?
PSAP, nine-one-one.
That's just the nine-one-one?
Right. And you're not the only ones, there's a lot of people that use Somerset, the whole city of Augusta, Somerset.
And there is a center in Augusta for that, that we all stopped using and went to Somerset, right?
No, there are, there are either four or five towns in this list, Cliff hasn't given me that information, that they do PSAP services for, okay?
Okay.
And I, and I'm pretty sure that, that, I know that Windsor uses it, Vassalboro uses it, okay? And I just don't, and maybe Litchfield, I just don't know, I don't want to misspeak and say...
Well, I'm probably putting my feet into something sticky, but the RCC, I think, from having been on the board for way too long, is, isn't that the center that we had some issues with in years past with? I don't want to get too detailed on that. John's not here, you can help me here.
Yeah, that's great.
And it was in the news.
It's beautiful, the history.
It just wasn't working to our advantage, which is why we went with Somerset, because the RCC is Kennebec, right?
The RCC is actually the state, is run by the state of Maine.
Okay.
Okay? And what it is, is three months ago, they closed down the Gray Barracks
Okay.
down south. They moved all of those, all the dispatch to Augusta.
Okay.
Okay? It's over half the state in that one center.
So, there's a Somerset County, is there a Kennebec County dispatch?
There is none.
So that's the only place we have to go for PSAP?
You can go to Kennebec, you can go to Somerset, you can ask any of the actual...
Okay, so there is a Kennebec, there is a Kennebec dispatch.
There is not, it's the RCC. Kennebec County does not have its own dispatch center like Somerset.
Okay.
Lincoln County, okay?
PSAP is different than dispatch. PSAP is where you get the call goes to a nine-one-one number, and they put it to the dispatch center.
Okay.
They're before the dispatch center.
That's why the first question that they asked.
See, isn't this interesting?
It's amazing.
And it's, I just remember, there was a reason we went with Somerset, and it was because whatever the other option was, was not working well on a kind of political, financial level, and that's why we went Somerset.
Teresa mentioned that to me, so you're right about that, I don't know the details, but Teresa, she did mention that component, I think it was several years ago.
Oh, we're talking ten or twelve.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we're not talking about changing that relationship at all, we're just talking about getting out of the RCC and into the Augusta.
Correct.
Okay, and then would you address sometime, and maybe you were already planning on it, I know that this went out to the people of Augusta, and the city council, I think, talked about it, and I couldn't remember, but I thought they had said, no, they weren't really interested, but then maybe they were, if it was gonna be, if they could have enough money to hire the right people.
That was, that was very much misreported by area media.
Okay.
Okay?
So if you can just give me what we need to know, that would be perfect.
My relationship with the Augusta PD and the city council is very good and very solid.
Excellent.
Okay? Again, I worked there for eighteen years, I know all the players. I've worked with all the players. And there is no politics in my office, get the business done.
Okay, and so Augusta is fine as a community doing this service at this cost?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Absolutely.
I can be quiet now.
So again, so then, so that was the big deal, my, my real druthers with this whole thing was the information management. And it was like, we're not running two CADs, we're only gonna run the Spillman CAD. It's too, it's too confusing for the dispatchers, and they could mess up, okay? Well, like three weeks ago, I find out, okay, from Cliff, is the real reason is that they were underfunded, and they've been underfunded for years, okay? Again, way before I came here. I'm like, so I met with Cliff last week. I said, "Cliff, how many dispatches?" Because Gardner is out on their own. Poor little Gardner has got nobody. That's the part that's eating me up. Say, "Okay Cliff, well, what do you need to bring Kennebec and Gardner..." Say, "Okay, Cliff, well, what do you need to bring Kennebec and Gardner back into your fold?" "Well, we need about seven dispatchers, I think, seven dispatchers." And that doesn't really sound unreasonable, because Augusta's hiring four to carry us.
Without Gardner?
Without Gardner. Okay? And so that would make sense. I think that was, I think that that was appropriate from Cliff to tell me that. And I was like, "Okay, how much is it per dispatcher?" Because I know Augusta is probably right around $80,000, you know, something like that, maybe a little less, maybe a little more. But here's the number, the bottom line, it's 367-939. And I'm saying, and I told him how much, you know, I believe that Augusta was charging us, so he goes, "Oh, no." Well, we're probably more around 90 or 91, maybe 92. Well, you do the math. Seven times nine.
Right.
Okay? And add a lot of zeros. What is more fiscally responsible? $640,000 or 367-939?
Right.
Okay? Now, I could go build, people are, I've had people come up to me and go, "Oh, you could just be a hero. And you could build your own county dispatch center." I don't want to be a hero. And I don't want to run a county dispatch center. Okay? The cost would be astronomical. Now, I could build a comm center and staff it for about $800,000, but it's a lot more than 367-939.
And Augusta already knows what they're doing.
And Augusta's already doing it.
They're doing it.
So all we've got to do is run a blue line to their connection, and this is already going. Because the bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, is this is not the town's decision. This is my decision. And it is clearly just on the safety of our communities and my people out there working the roads. So...
So are there more questions for Ken? Anybody in the public want to ask a question? Please, sir.
This is one of the things that I...
Yes.
We just need you to use the mic so it goes on the film.
Well, you know, I'm a fellow resident.
Ken Mason.
Thank you very much for your service and your initiative here. First question is to echo the chairman's sentiments here for long-range planning and stability of a system. Seems to me we need a more formalized arrangement with Augusta that speaks to how the pricing will work, call volume, population, and what have you. No grand list, please. Okay? No property values, just call volume and, but that really needs to happen so you guys can plan and you, you know, it's in your own best interest, too, I think you would agree.
Nothing has been set in stone on this right now. I was trying to make it easier. We'll figure out something more in the lines of your talking about...
The clock is ticking, so we don't have a lot of time to do something, or at some point, we're going to be without a PSAP operation.
Five months, 23 days.
But who's counting?
I am.
Yeah. So I like the way this is heading, support it, but I really think that other shoe needs to drop in terms of a more structured arrangement. You mentioned, and I had asked here earlier, too, what the, what the condition is of your communications equipment. Then I heard you say, "Our radios stink."
I was going to add that.
Do you have repeaters? Do you, are you high-band? Are you low-band? Are you mix of both? Where are we and where you want to go? Because that is a huge capital outlay. And I think, thanks very much for all your work.
Certainly. And I can answer that question.
Woo-hoo!
Because we already, we got that part worked out a couple months ago, okay? When we knew things with the RCC wasn't going. The people at Kennebec County, the commissioners and Bob Devlin, for years have been looking out for the people of Kennebec County. And we have a pretty good capital improvement fund, not only for our jail. We can lose $180,000 chiller on the roof, the air conditioning unit, and buy it just like that. Okay? I plan on, because we're already working with the vendor that does Augusta's, it's Horizon Technologies, they're actually out of Arizona. In fact, Dan Olet was in my office today from Arizona. We have three towers that we currently use. We use Tower in Sidney, Tower in New Sharon, and we have Tower in Litchfield. We found another tower in Vasselboro, the China Lakes region, Benton, Albion, and Vasselboro. Communications have been a little bad because there's no tower right over there. Now, our main tower, which is in Sidney, does a pretty good job. We're going to, we've already got a quote from Dan's, for $130,000 to upgrade three towers, connect with Augusta's three towers. So we've got this big, just communication network. It's not only going to benefit us, it's going to benefit Augusta, too. But it's been kind of a quid pro quo, it's going to be a quid pro quo thing. They're helping us out. They're really doing us a big favor. They could have gone, "No." And I don't know what we would have done, other than build a new comm center for an immense amount of money. Now, to answer your questions about junk, I'm buying $67,000 worth of brand-new mobile radios for our cruisers. Every single car is getting a brand-new radio.
I understand.
Oh, yeah. Harris, Tate Harris.
With repeaters?
Oh, yeah. Well, no, the repeaters are going on the towers with microwaves and all. I don't know a lot of the hocus pocus because it's not my bailiwick, but I trust these people because I hear Augusta's radios.
I agree.
It's just like you're right there. There's no squawks in the middle, there's no, "Can you repeat your traffic again?" It's not like that. Portables, all brand-new portables. Because what it is, is we're going digital. We're going to be able to transmit and receive analog, but we're going to also be able to do it digital. Because a few years down the road, we're going to be mandated by the feds to all be digital.
And nobody will make analog.
Right.
So just do it now, get it over with.
So we're kind of getting ahead of the curve a little bit. And that's $67,000. A lot of that I can cover out of forfeiture funds that I have, that I inherited.
Okay.
Okay? But we have that really nice, healthy capital improvements that we're going to be able to draw from and upgrade our system to where it should be. And when I do chicken, I do it right. We're not, we're not just going to, you know, kind of piece it together. Because Dan was like, "Well, you know, we can do this to save money." And I'm like, "No." Got your original quote, I know what it is. It may be a little bit more because of that other tower that we found.
Right.
Okay? About probably $30,000 more. And I'm going to be talking with the commissioners and Bob Devlin about that, going, "Hey, can we think about this? About doing it?" So it'll just be awesome.
They have space on that tower?
There's nothing on it.
Oh, my God.
We've already...
So you could be at the highest point.
Yeah.
And fill in any voids?
Yep. Because the owner is Mike Olet, and we reached, we found out who he was and reached out to him, and he said, "What I will charge you is next to nothing. I don't have that figure yet because I got to know. What is next to nothing to you?" Okay?
You sound a little bit like me, Ken.
What is that?
So, but, I, because like what we did with the tower in Sidney, okay? We don't own that tower, we don't own the building. But I got a grant for a 14K generator for that place. I have a 14K generator in there. Because of the storm in October of 17, when it whacked out, okay, we were down. All right? I just put a heat pump in it two months ago. Dave, our IT slash guru for the county, he's amazing, he's got a camera in there, he can see the temperature, he, and I'm not going to say I would be able to do that to everyone, but I'm building up our infrastructure at the least cost to our county.
It's not going to be extra money to the town for you to build up.
So, that's, that's really all I got. I would like to entertain any other questions that you might have, but this is my recommendation. And again, I know it's an increase, I'm not pleased about it, but I'm concerned about my people and the people I serve.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any other questions as we close this out? I guess what I would ask is that you, and I'm sure you will, that you and Eric just stay close in touch. And as was reiterated here by a resident and myself, I like to know what's the formula?
Yep.
As much as possible, so we can figure out how this lies over, you know, you can't talk about 10-year horizons, but you can talk about three-year horizons, I think.
Oh, absolutely.
With some degree of predictability. So that would be very helpful to us.
Well, there's going to have to be some kind of documentation, and I understand that.
Yep.
I'm just trying to keep it simple, without reinventing the wheel.
Would you like to go to the microphone?
I just wanted to say that in a lot of the other counties and in a lot of other places, this is just in your county bill.
Yep.
This isn't even something that you'd have to consider or think about. It's just part of your county bill. The county would just handle it and pay their vendors in different counties, or they have their own and they just add it into your county bill. He's trying to be as clear as to be, and so let you know what's going on and how it's going on.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying not to do is what I, what I don't want to do is, see, we have these other, we have Augusta, and that does Augusta PD and Hollowell PD. We have Winthrop, that does Winthrop and Monmouth, they're kind of in their little bubble. We have, we have Waterville, that dispatches for Waterville. Winslow, Oakland, and Clinton, when Clinton is working. I would have a real hard time taxing everybody equally for services that they don't get. They're already paying big money. Augusta's like 1.8 million to run their dispatch center. So I'm trying to keep it on the users, if you will. Just, it just wouldn't be fair.
Well, we wouldn't want to have to pay for theirs.
No.
So it goes both ways.
Yeah.
Well, I really appreciate you coming and giving us this, I'm sure you're aware that, if you ever listen to our tapes, that we're always very clear when we point out what this board is responsible for and has any jurisdiction over, which is just the municipal budget, not the county budget, nor the school budget.
Yep.
So I think it goes a long way to help our public to see what some of their county budget is being spent on, and if they see an increase. This, this is not a 20% increase on our county budget, it's on a piece of a budget that's in the county, so this is fine.
Well, they're not, we're not, from what I understand, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to increase the town's taxes.
Right.
For county taxes for this. These are just going to be taxes that, that you just have to pay separate. Again, we're just, we're...
Yeah, this is a separate line, this is not a...
Right, exactly.
This is not an economy assessment.
Like your Sexton line.
Okay.
Okay? It's just going to be the radio dispatch line.
Okay. So instead of paying the state, we're going to pay Augusta?
Correct.
But instead of Augusta, we're going to pay the county.
Well, however...
The county. You're going to pay Augusta, we'll pay you.
However, the people smarter than me get it figured out so that we can get this done.
Right.
Because I'm having, I'm meeting with the commissioners on Tuesday, we're going to finalize this because they are the fiduciary agent.
Yeah.
Okay? So, and they're supportive because I've been keeping them in the loop. I talk to them all the time, and, you know, here's where we are.
Well, I feel like if we pride ourselves on having common sense on this board, which I think we often talk about, and if you believe that your common sense, as is someone in your position, that this is, because I don't know anything about this, you're the expert, but if this is helping our people and protecting us in the proper ways, and you think it's the best move, then I think it's an easy sell to say, "Listen, if we can continue this upgrade, let's do it better, and let's do it more efficiently." And that's something that I will always support. So thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Because once, once I get the commissioner's approval on Tuesday, I'm having all brand-new mobile radios and portables coming our way.
Good.
Because it's already noticeable in my car, because I just got, I got a new car, and I borrowed a brand-new radio from Augusta, a portable and a mobile, and I had them put it in. And it's like night and day. I can set the portables on my table, both of them, the one I have now and the new one, and I can hear RCC clear as a bell over my, over the new one, and the other one either nothing or crackles and...
Well, it's...
Thank you, Ken.
Do it right the first time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go back into the agenda. It's been a little bit all over the place, and we had a couple people that we took out of order, which was...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reminds me that we missed town staff reports.
Yes.
So the floor's yours, Eric.
All right. Well, it kept us on track, so I don't mind waiting a little while.
You're a good guy, yeah.
All right, well, I'll start with town manager's report. We've been actually quite quiet since our last meeting. We had the holidays in there, and so I've just been kind of filling in a little bit here and there. But was a reminder that with all this weather, we do have sand buckets available for our older residents. I say it almost every meeting that we have during the winter months, but those are available.
Just December 10th, 2018?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
The one online is correct, I printed off.
Yeah, no, 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 I just want to make sure it wasn't my...
No, that was, that was my mistake. The one online's correct. This is the one that I printed off before I realized there was...
So the date is wrong, but the information is right?
The information is right, yeah.
Thank you.
Not checked.
God bless you.
I just, yeah.
Is that all copy and paste, man?
Is that all copy and paste, man?
Yeah.
We never do that.
Control V.
That's how it goes. So the last storm, few storms we had in November and December have demonstrated that our equipment, everything's running well. We've got all the little bugs out. There really weren't any with the new equipment, so that was fantastic, just getting comfortable with it. And so the staff and the equipment are all performing well and ready to go. And tomorrow and Wednesday, we're going to have a pretty messy storm. I don't know if it's going to be as big as it was originally predicted, but we're going to have some ice, we're going to have some rain, we're going to have some snow. So it's going to be sloppy, but our priority is making sure that anybody coming to vote tomorrow will have a safe access to the town building. So that's going to be a big part of what we do tomorrow. Moving on to administration and personnel, I have a little bit here about the budget. And just happy to see that this is moving along again well. I'm, you know, had good response rates from the boards and committees. Everybody's been really falling in line and presenting information that's easily understood and in a format that we can work with. So it's going, going well. And the budget committee has been very engaged. And one of the things that they have looked at and suggested in discussing their goals and the goals the select boards come up with, is trying to plan for what many folks see as a possible, not recession, but softening of the markets or something like that. We might not see the same revenues, we might not see the same building, we might not see residents buying as many new cars. And so they're making sure that we're mindful, I'm mindful, in the planning process of accounting for that. And so one of their suggestions was I bring that to the board, that goal for you to consider to consider and, you know, support or not, but I expect you probably would, so I wanted to bring that up to you. The hiring process for the clerk is, is underway, and we do have, right now, at least three interviews, and we're probably gonna have four scheduled by the time we're done. We've got at least two next, or two this Friday, and probably gonna have a couple more next week. Scheduling's never easy, but I think we're getting to the, to the end of that. And we have some good applicants, some local residents with, not necessarily with clerk experience, but with administrative experience, and some applicants from away, I'll say, with clerk experience. So we have an interesting mix, and I think that we're gonna find someone suitable, either that we can train or we can work with out of the, out of the box. And the last administrative piece here is that we have a, we've been working on IT, much like Ken and the county, and it's going not quite as well as I would have hoped. We've had a lot of issues, but we are trying every day to work with our IT vendor to get things back on track. We have folks moving from old to new email addresses, new servers, new computers, not across the board, but it's just making things a bit jumbled, so we're having some communication issues. I've texted the board, I've had to talk to the public. So anyway, I just want to say thank you very much for the patience that you all had in dealing with this transition. We do it so that if we do have a failure, that we won't have a failure, basically. Our server doesn't fail, our PCs don't fail, but that transition takes a little bit of effort, so.
So do we have email sitting someplace?
You do, and actually, I think right now, as it stands, there, you have them in two places, if not three, but we're gonna be bringing all that together. The other item with this is that we do have the, the new tablets available for the select board, and what I need to do is set a time with each of you to go over that. We're gonna have email set up on the tablets, and we'll have some, you know, digital library-type information on there as well, but we just need to go through some basic stuff, so I'll be contacting each of you to set up a time to, to review those as part of this whole technology upgrade.
Yahoo.
So, your email will, is, is up and functioning again, or not quite?
It's in the middle. My old email address still works, my new one half works. So I'd appreciate if folks, until I say otherwise, could use my reedfield dot T M G R at Roadrunner. In the future, it'll be a little bit easier, it'll be manager at reedfieldmaine.org, but right now, I'm still at the old number, so.
That's right. New phone, who cares?
Yeah, all right. So the IT stuff, I have to apologize, it's not going as well as I would have hoped, but we're, we're at least making the effort, and we'll get there. Transfer station, the apparel impact container has been installed, that's for the clothing recycling. If you don't want to have the clothing recycled or moved to other areas, this actually is a company out of New Hampshire, feel free to donate to Goodwill and Augusta or the Black Bear Boutique at the, I guess there's one at the middle school and the high school. So we do have local options besides that, but it's a convenient choice, and it saves us money because it doesn't end up in the waste stream. So please use one of those options. And you can still bring plastic bags to the transfer station, we, we will accept all plastic film there. However, I wanted to point out that you can also take that, those materials to local stores. Hannaford and Walmart will accept plastic bags, so if it's more convenient for you to bring them on your next grocery trip, then bring them to the transfer station. Once a week, we can, we can do both, you can do both. We are looking at the option of actually becoming a collection center, which would make it easier for us to dispose of them, because right now, we're bringing them to Hannaford or Walmart, and that's starting to cause a little bit of friction with them because we have a large volume. So we're working on it, but right now, we're trying to diffuse a little bit of that large volume that everybody's doing such a great job bringing to us to recycle, so.
And I'm very happy that we're still, we still have a way of doing that.
Yes.
We do, absolutely.
The town has a guardianship role in that.
Yes.
Yep.
Important.
Some towns are not so lucky.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I will say that there is discussion with the Augusta discussion around bag bans, of having the solid waste committee write a letter probably in support of that, from the, the direction I'm hearing from, from them. And that was one of the first things I thought when I heard that article, or read that article, was, well, geez, we should be looking at supporting that perhaps, because it does have an impact on us.
My editorial is you've gotta do that statewide.
Yeah.
To really be truly effective. But go ahead.
Yeah.
Please finish your report.
Bags are like, you know, one small portion of the plastic glut, but anyway, a little bit here and there. The last thing I have is announcements, and the Last Chance Rebe's Clinic is still planned for January 15th, and you still do need to pre-register. That's going on, and I'll just put a number to the, the comments about the, the school bond. Again, reporting tomorrow, 5.8 million in principal, the interest payments will add to that, but I thought that was a very good comment you made about how that information's presented. I was surprised at how little information was actually required by statute for the school bond compared to what the municipal government is required with.
You folks are required...
That's something I'm planning on talking to our legislator about, yeah.
I'm sure he would be pleased with your face.
I, I think it, it would definitely help, because of the public participation issue that we all face, having that information in the article, I think, makes a lot of sense to me. So I'm, I'm planning on taking some action on that, but...
I'll get help, let me know.
Sure.
Joe Anonymous, go wait in line for 15 hours and testify in the Capitol.
I don't know if I'll go that far, but I do plan on writing a letter to somebody. So that's my town manager's report. Any, any questions?
No.
All right.
We hit it all, thank you.
I have two treasurer's reports for you, both available online, November and December. Because of the meeting schedule we had last month, it may be challenging to get that pulled together in time, so you did ask that it be online, and I put it up there. I also brought it tonight so that you folks can have a copy of it. November, we had the start of the, the budget process. We, again, I, I was very pleased that I just sent an email out, and then magically, we started getting information back, so I, I really appreciate the cooperation that we've had from the boards and committees. It's been great, and the goal setting was fantastic, the responsiveness, the discussions between, even though it's not direct, the select board and the budget committee, it helps give a really good direction. So that's, that was a really good start. Overall, financially, we did have a few, you know, I call them anomalies, I always like to point those out. Overall, we should be around, shoot, that's December. Okay, I have November in here, let me, let me just run through that really quick. It's back here. We should be around 42% for the year. We did see a big bump in revenues that threw things way off, we were something about 3,000...
Percent.
52%. And that's because we had $160,000 come in for our bond proceeds, speaking of bonds, for the Marin Hook Lake Outlook Dam. So that's what that number is, that's why those revenues, for under, other revenues are so far out of, out of whack. And then we had two capital expenditure lines that were expanded pretty heavily, transfer station and also the Marin Hook Lake Dam. So those two things put our, our capital expenditures out of sync as well. So that's my summary for November. Everything else looked normal, check rec looked normal, and I didn't, I didn't have any, any concerns for the month of November. If you don't mind, I'll just roll into, into December.
Please do.
We should be about 50% expended. December, we saw a lot more activity for the audit. Our auditors have been reaching out to members of the board, other staff to talk about the audit and the financial house and viability of certain components of our internal controls, how well we do at reporting and things like that. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see that happening a bit more with our new auditor. It was one of the things I'd, you know, asked for, was to have a bit more of that human side of the audit, because it's not just numbers, it's how we manage our money. And so that discussion that's been happening, I'm really happy to see it, and I think it's gonna result in a, a much more, a higher level of confidence for the board, for the public, for everybody, in, in what we're doing and how we're doing it, not just what the bottom line is. That's, that's the, the easy part, so to speak.
What is the anticipated delivery date on the audit?
We had originally set the end of December with our contract, however, we had such a hard time getting information from our previous auditors, I'm not gonna...
Okay.
Hold back on that statement.
Okay.
It took them a hell of a long time to get us the information we needed, and even getting it to our new auditor, so...
So our previous auditors, who were not so great on deadlines...
Continued that trend.
Affected the first year of this audit.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
And, and so...
I think I stated that okay.
You did, yeah.
You did.
Very judiciously.
I had talked, the last time I'd spoken with them, I said I'd like to have it by the end of January. I'm gonna be reaching out to them this week and find out where we are with that. I think we can either get that or very close.
Good.
So, moving on to the, to the numbers now here, well, I'll start by saying that the check rec looked good for December. We continue to have higher than expected or higher than historically seen balances in our checking account. That's a good thing. In part, that's because we've put a lot of money away in reserves and haven't been expanding it quite as rapidly as we have in years past, but overall, we're just seeing a slow build, which I, I like to see. And again, I think that if we have a year where we spend $200,000 on roads, that'll go right back to that historic level of around, you know, 1.8 million, 2 million, something like that. And again, that does change over the course of the year, but for this time of year, we would expect to see around, around that amount, and we're at about 2.17 million in the checking account for December for this year to date. Other items, we had some unusual activity as far as real estate payments. We appear to be 75% less than last year, month to month, December to December, but if you recall, there was a, the tax plan that came out last year, everybody was paying their taxes early in order to try to capitalize on some kind of real or imagined tax savings. And so we had a ton of money coming in last December, and this year, it doesn't look like anything, but year-to-date, we're actually very close to where we should be. That was one anomaly. Let's see, 25,000... Oh, okay, so the, the Stephen Tabitha King grant that came in, that also showed up in revenues and made our public's...
So I moved something, I moved to accept that tonight, and the check's already in the bank.
That's right, yeah, we were supposed to do that, weren't we? The check is in the bank, but...
That's magical.
Technicality is here. You, you should vote to do that after I'm done.
It's earning interest, it's okay.
Oh, we did move, we did accept, we did do that.
You did accept the grant, okay, I, I thought, I thought for some reason you hadn't, but...
No, we did.
Nope, that's excellent.
How magic.
Shows how much I was paying attention.
We actually accepted their, applying for the grant.
You, you did, yeah, yeah, at one point as well, yes. So, but per our ordinances, we are required to also accept the, the funds. So that threw us off a little bit on the revenues, and also the, the year-to-date, year-to-date net expenses are up as well, about $300,000 over last year. 200,000 of that is, again, I referenced it in November's report, due-to expenditures for road improvements and capital expenditures and work at the transfer station, so. Money that has come out, but we did anticipate it, so. That's it, I went longer than usual, probably because I'm out of order, but...
It's all right, you're out of routine.
We'll live...
Are there, are there questions for Eric on the treasurer reports for November and December?
No. I'd like to make a motion at this point in time that we extend our meeting for 15 minutes, seeing that we still have, I think, four items to go.
My second.
All in favor? Thank you. So we're looking at a 15?
Or earlier is always fine.
Yes, I agree. So we will move on to 19-054, which is really a part two of a discussion we had at the last meeting, and that was to conduct an annual review of the comprehensive plan, so, I mean, I kind of considered that we did that, there were a few things that we wanted to incorporate, and our, where are we with that, I guess? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm good with it. I, I know, I read through it again, and I noticed that Eric made updates. He also reformatted it, I think it's easier to read.
Except for being sideways.
Yeah, but I can change that if I downloaded it, and I'm fine with that. I like that it's numbered now, and that makes it certainly easier to reference. Great job, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, that feedback and your help in putting in some of those edits to the notes. I did go through, and we updated every single one of those notes, as well as the timeframe when it was reviewed. I pulled out the who reviewed what, because it's less relevant than, than the fact that it was done, and we know what we're talking about, which I feel we do. And I also feel that there have been comments made in the past that we haven't accomplished that much because we haven't been paying attention to it, or something to that effect. And the more I look at this and the more we review it, the more I disagree with that, because I feel that a lot of these goals have been ongoing. Some things have been set aside, but they've been set aside by vote, or just out of the nature of, of, of the way things have changed over the past 10 years, or the fact that maybe the goal that was put out in 2009 was just a little bit off. And so the more time I spend with this, or how it was presented or formatted or whatever, but the more I see that, that almost all of these have significant action, the one area that we talked about last time was housing, and we haven't had a lot of action on that, but we also haven't had much of a demand. It's been, you know, surprising to me how little we've had in the way of people requesting things like affordable housing or programs to bring in multi-unit housing or, or anything in that, in that nature. We have had some discussion around senior housing, but I think that there's an opportunity here, and I think that the board, when, when you do review this, you know, or, or get more into it, maybe next year, this will be a goal, that housing piece, because we have accomplished so much on so many of these other items. But I think this is a great exercise, I really appreciate you all taking the time to, to look at this, and if I've done something to make it a little bit clearer, then, then I'm glad, so.
Is it posted as an item somewhere on the webpage?
Right now, it's just in the packet. However, we could, we could bring it up a level.
It needs to be.
I'd like, I'd like to see it there.
Agreed.
Turned, also.
Yeah.
Well, for the general public, it's gonna be easier if you're looking at it, but then it makes it, we had comments from several residents that, I didn't realize we had one of these, or I knew we had one, but I'd never read it in all the 30 years I've lived here, so...
And if you look at this, it's easier to understand than reading the whole...
Yeah.
The whole comp plan, absolutely.
Under item seven in the midterm things, and I'm sorry, this is just, it stood out to me, on the, after 2018...
Yep.
It just, it, I guess it should be an S there. Most controls at the state level for Indian waters, there have, have been increased, there has been increasing interest, do you see that?
Has, has us missing an S.
Currently says there ha been. I just happened to see it, I appreciate it.
You have to. Greg Dergan, who I'm sure went home to watch us, is very happy that you're doing that for us.
Well, he is my mentor, he is my muse.
There we go. So Greg is paying off.
Let that be on the public record.
All right.
Are there other questions and observations to the board?
Job well done.
Yep, great.
Thank you.
One last comment on this, is I do appreciate Dave Trunell's comments, and I did take them into consideration and look at putting in some, some completion dates for these, not just a, you know, or a due date, I guess is one of the terms that we used, and also changed around some of the responsibility or ownership. This actually looks a lot more like our select board goals...
Yeah.
...that we have from the retreat, so this is actually a, a good thing to revise this and make it more consistent and easier to integrate into your goal setting, so.
Yeah, and I, this would be kind of a takeaway from this, we do this review, but also at our board retreat, it probably would be good to spend a portion of time at that retreat...
Here, here.
...going back into the comp plan, and then, you know, that may give us some guidance. It, you know, the operation of the town, because we're residents and we kind of all recognize some of the same values and everything, I think our goals have sort of reflected almost accidentally, if you will, on, on the comprehensive plan, but we can do it a little bit more mindfully, I think, in the future, so, very good. We'll move on to the first reading of the traffic and parking ordinance. We had an informational reading, so this is sort of a first reading to get some feedback and some direction and any language corrections, and, and then we would have a second reading, and we, I believe at that second reading, we would place the ordinance into effect because this is an ordinance that actually is a responsibility by law of the select board and does not go to a public ordinance vote.
Correct.
That is correct, yes.
That's correct, so that second reading would be approval of the audi, of the, of the ordinance, I believe.
As long as there were no issues.
Well, yes, you're right, we could bounce it back on the second reading, absolutely.
Eric, have there been any changes in this from where it was when we did our last reading at the informational?
There have not, and I do have notes about a couple of comments from that last board meeting that need to be incorporated, parking at our parks and public areas, as well as clarifying the role of enforcement, both, both comments that were very well received. Tonight, I had just wanted to, because last time, we didn't really have much time, and, you know, again, we're kind of crunched a little bit, but I just wanted to point out that this isn't a new ordinance, there are components of it that are new, but if, if you look at the first page, the index, this is a great way to get a summary of what, what is, what has been, and what hopefully will be with, with respect to these ordinance components. We have some policies that are included in this ordinance, we have a couple of different ordinances that are included altogether, so what I'm proposing here, I think that what, what's happening is a consolidation, much as we've done in the past with other ordinances, of a lot of diffuse material. of a lot of diffuse material. And so, a lot of the things relating to traffic and parking already exist in a, for the Reed Field Corner area, in the form of a traffic ordinance that pertains just to that one area. However, we have a lot more roads and a lot more traffic issues than just Reed Field Corner. So that's being expanded. However, we also have townwide a snow plowing, snow removal ordinance. That's being brought in almost verbatim, with a few small changes. But those things together, they make sense to be together, because these are all issues that relate to the management and public charge the select board has of making sure our roadways are passable, safe, and serve the needs of the public. So...
Sir, if I may interrupt you for one second, Eric. So when we finalize this and vote on it, perhaps at the same time, that motion should be inclusive of any policies at sunset. So we can just get them off the website, so we don't have any confusing, this is the parking ordinance here, this is the plowing ordinance. If it's encapsulated here, and it's duplicative, well, actually, it supersedes it because it's an ordinance, then we want to get rid of that policy.
He has that in the abrogation?
Abrogation.
Okay.
Number 16 on page 14.
Fancy word of the, well, actually, it was two years ago.
I want to make sure we officially...
Yes.
Yes.
Identify those documents.
They are there.
And get rid of them.
Yep.
They're there, okay.
Yeah, it's the very end of the document.
Okay, good.
But...
You know exactly where I fell asleep reading it.
Yeah, it's written up with the highlights of severability and appendices.
Okay, very good.
So, this may be for the public, but I think I need it as well, so I'm going to just ask this question. So in reading your key, S for standard ordinance language means that in any ordinance, these things need to be there?
Generally speaking, things like, who is responsible, what authority do we have to create this, all of those things, yep.
And those are all noted with an S. Now, some of them have a slash N, which means that they have been there before, but we have added some new language to it.
That's right.
Okay. And then, the ones that are C, very clearly are current ordinances or policies. And if it's just a C, that means we really didn't change anything in it?
For the most part, yeah.
Very little.
Very little, yeah.
Very little change.
Snow plowing ordinance will be one of those that it's, boy, what's a...
Right. And the temporary road closure, the driveway siding and culverts.
Yeah, those are all very, very...
Very similar.
Yes.
Okay. But then the ones that have an E...
Yes.
Or that have an N, those are still all current policies, but they've had extensive changes made to them, or some new language added.
Yeah, it's kind of a scale. So the E would be more, that expanded would be a pretty significant rewrite, and new is just straight up new, new language. And so, road opening, again, is one where there's new language, but it's also just reserved, because, you know, in order to make that functional, we basically have to come up with a road opening permit, and have the supporting documentation around that. Road opening permits are common in other places. We have one about every five years that comes up in Reed Field. In the past, we've just grabbed an old state form and filled it in, but I want to do better than that. I'd like to have a standard form for us. But, yeah, an N is anything that's completely new.
Can I just ask a question? Are we, I'm sorry?
No, I'm done, thank you.
One of the reasons why I like being on this board is that, would you say that this is a continuing trend that we have tried to maintain of, not necessarily, well, it is really, is reducing some of the clutter in terms of the governing ordinances and documents of the town? And I know that this doesn't go out to the public, but that's been a continuing goal of ours. And I just, I think it should be known, and I want to say it in the public forum, is we continue to find ways to reduce the redundancy and trim the fat from what I think is already something that is part of our goals. So I really enjoy being a part of that, and I think that something like this, I know it may seem so simple, but to put things together that seem normal, to trim language that no longer is needed, to consolidate and make more efficient, I think it's exactly the reason why I like being on the select board. So, thank you, and I think it's great.
Thanks.
And another great place that we've done that was the administrative ordinance that a previous board did, and we have added some more to that, so...
So, if I can just lead us in a different direction for a second?
Oh, no more back nutting.
Are there pragmatic parking, traffic issues that you're not seeing in this? That, I know some of you have already communicated with Eric, so we'll probably see some changes in number two. But is there anything that's flashing at you now that you want to make sure you flag?
Not other than what he already noted that we discussed previously.
Okay.
I didn't see anything else on the re-read.
And so that language will come in. And we may go one more meeting on it, but we'll get this in effect pretty quickly.
Oh, and I will point out, last comment from me on this one, is that I did reach out to Kennebec County, Kennebec Valley Council of Governments regarding review of this ordinance, as well as the solid waste transfer station operations manual. So, we talk a lot about KV COG and what they do for us, and I'm hoping to have them do a little bit more, and help me out as well, so...
Great.
Great.
Do they have a new executive director?
They do. I don't know the specifics.
Very good. Any other feedback on that first reading? Everybody?
All set?
All set?
Yeah, fantastic.
Do we need to address again on 19-06, too, that we didn't give Eric any instruction after Ken's presentation?
I got the impression we were not making the decision that county's making.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I got a distinct, very direct, unmistakable feeling that...
And you kind of like said, it's my decision.
Yeah.
Well, no, no, I mean...
The cost is his decision.
The cost, but the payment of that is our decision, and that's the thing. We could just not pay it and roll the dice and say, yeah, 911, so what? You know, it's not, you know, it's his decision.
We could, we could, is what it comes down to. You know, you saw that municipal spending.
Well, the letter that came from Cliff Wells says that he respectfully requests that you contact me via email by January 15th to inform me of your decision, whether you decide to stay with the state, or whether you will purchase your services elsewhere as of July. And he needs to know by that date. And I think, based on our discussion, we are going to go with what the Kennebec County Sheriff is recommending. And so, I think we should make a motion to instruct Eric to respond to Cliff Wells.
I think if you believe that, you should make that motion.
Okay.
Motion.
Then I'd like to make a motion to instruct the town manager to reply to Cliff Wells in the negative, that we will be purchasing our services elsewhere as of July.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Could you repeat the motion?
Could I repeat it?
Yeah, please.
That we would like to instruct the town manager to respond to Cliff Wells in the negative, that we will not be purchasing services with them as of July.
July 1.
July 1.
Okay, great. Any discussion on the motion?
Real quick, I got to get in here. When they explained to me all of the different ways, and all of the different layers that a 911 call goes through, that's bizarre to me. It is bizarre to me, and I think it's strange. So, sorry, just, you know, the layers and differently, it's like, that's, it's crazy.
You're just the antiquated equipment, and I mean...
You know, one and the other.
Well, it really makes you wonder why the state of Maine doesn't have six regional service centers that are staffed and handle all 911.
Why don't they have that, I wonder?
I don't know.
But I think this is a good, good thing that's come up by Dennis, and I don't think we've done this since Dennis has been here, is had Kennebec Valley Emergency Management come to the board. And we haven't done a drill. I'm not sure we need to do another walk-through drill.
We did a table drill.
Right. But it certainly wouldn't hurt for us to maybe go visit them, or, I think it's good for each select board to do that personally. But that would help, Dennis, for you to understand how that works, and why it's the way it is, and hear what their point of view is on should it stay that way or not, because...
It just seems...
If we think it's antiquated, then we can have some power in saying, let's have this be changed.
Well, from, I mean, I am so, I mean, I am brand new to it, but like, the layers of stuff you have to get through, you know, and jeezum, you know, everybody's got a little piece of that pie.
Interagency satisfyingness.
Heavens to Betsy, oh my gosh.
Okay, well, we do have a motion on the floor, so is there anyone that needs to speak to the motion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. We've been chatty tonight.
I know, that's my bad.
No, it's good to be chatty.
I like chatting.
We have six minutes.
Yep.
We want to set the date and time for the annual chairs meeting of the policies in front of you. So we just try to do this and have the annual chairs meeting. What I would ask you to do is just to instruct Chris and I to set that up as a part of an agenda. I think for the annual chairs meeting for this year, sometimes we've done a separate meeting, sometimes we've tried to combine it as the first hour of the select board meeting, and I think we can do that on one meeting that's off budget.
Yeah, so the first available slot would be January 22nd.
That'll be on budget.
Is that on budget?
We'll have a budget review, won't we? If we're not doing it tonight, we're doing it then.
Well, if it's not the 22nd, it could be the one after, and I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion, or do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
I would like Chris and Bruce to set a date. Would you, Dennis, to do it during a regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes, yes, that would be best for me.
Okay, we might, we might start that meeting at 6:00.
Indeed, indeed we shall, yeah.
Sure, that's fine. Great.
Okay, great.
And just make sure, please, that they have, the chairs have plenty of notice, not just a few days.
Absolutely.
So they can not feel rushed.
They usually get an invitation letter from me, or something of that nature.
Perfect, thanks.
Very good. How much do we want to charge to bury people?
Do we have a suggestion from the cemetery committee?
Yeah, is there a suggestion?
We do. So, the last page of the packet. These are the rules that were adopted in December.
Right.
What happened was that we wanted to give, we, the board wanted to give a little bit more time for folks to get comfortable with the idea of a higher number, give people a chance to buy low if they wanted to, and also...
Buy low, dig deep.
But, yeah. And so, the rules that were proposed included the proposed price. So currently, our price is $200 for a plot. And they have nuanced language between lot and plot, or they used to. Now, they're switching, and it's just $400 per...
Lot.
Per lot. And so, I think what it used to be is a lot used to include two plots, or a plot was, in any event. They gave you the answer. They're looking for $400 as proposed in their rules, and it was unanimously supported by the cemetery committee at that time when they were putting these together. So, that's your answer.
So, how many people are buried in a lot?
I think...
Is that two people and four cremains?
Uh...
Or something like that?
No, it says a lot will assure space, this is one C, for one full body burial, or the cremains of two people.
There we go.
So, yes, a lot is single occupancy.
So for $400, you get eight person or two cremains.
Okay, okay. So people might buy two adjacent lots?
Yes.
If they wanted to have two coffins.
They want a lay prone.
So, let me get, right, so let me get to my cost. So, previously, that would have cost them $400, and now that would cost a couple, $800?
Yes.
So it's a 100% increase.
Yes, and I think part of the...
And when was the last time we actually did an increase?
It was like 25 years ago. It's, I mean, inflation, we're still actually less than what inflation would have been. I think I did that math when I was looking at this, but, yeah, we're way, we're way behind on it.
And it includes perpetual care.
It does. And so, I mean, I think that even this doesn't quite cover that perpetual care. We obviously take on a part of that burden in our annual tax revenue. But, we're doing better by doubling it.
Yeah. I think, since this is the first time it's come up, and we haven't told the public what the increase is, I would like to either vote it in with a effective date in the future, or wait and vote it in at a later time, so that people have an opportunity to purchase low, as we've said. I think, especially if you're going to do an increase like that.
Thought that's what we did in December, but that's my recollection.
No, we did that without knowing.
We didn't know the price.
We didn't talk what, about what the price would be. So, with that in mind, I'd like to table it. And I'd like to tell the public to, to give us any feedback they have on that, on that. And with that said, I really personally feel that the cemetery committee's guidance is very wise, and it does make sense to have this increase in this amount. That's my own opinion. So I'll be happy to always give you my opinion upfront. But, in the meantime, let's let the public give us their opinion as well. And we should put this on the next agenda, because just tabling for a five-minute vote next time. Makes sense?
Yep.
Sure.
I move to adjourn.
Um, I wasn't quite done.
Oh, darn it, sorry.
So, should we make it, so if we're going to do that, I think we need to make it visible, say, on the website, and make sure that people have a chance to weigh in and/or purchase before it becomes effective. That's all. Thank you. Sorry. Now you can go.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Just move to adjourn, all in favor? We're adjourned.
Exactly.